Yes, so the purpose of this, first off, I just want to remind folks that we are recording this because it is a work session and not a regular meeting. We're not taking minutes. People may be taking notes for their own purposes, but we're not, AMAT's taking official minutes, but we are recording it and we'll have it posted up on the website. So if you want to refresh or if someone who didn't make the meeting wants to go back to it and check it out later, that's a possibility. So basically, the purpose that for the work session today is as we were looking at different projects that were needing some more additional funding or projects that haven't started going yet, and then the amendments to the tip, we are looking at some challenges in the outer years and making sure everything fit within the program. And so in conversation with the folks at DOT and AMAT staff, I kind of thought it made sense to have this work session so that we can, I didn't want there to be any surprises and I didn't want folks to, you know, have many months from now say, wow, I didn't know that project was that much more or whatever. In addition, we have some, well, we could call it differences of opinion or some possible confusion on some of the projects in here and the costs and scopes and things of that nature. So this is just an interest in, in the interest of keeping everything out in the open and transparent. I want to make sure everyone's on the same page of things that we have going here. So if you look at the page I have open, it says 2019 to 22 tip project cost review. Is that big enough for folks to see or do I need to zoom in a little bit more?
Hey Craig, are you able to make your, is your PDF, sorry, is your Acrobat window maximized?
It is now maximized. Is that better? What's that?
Can you push zoom?
Yeah.
Perfect, right there.
Oh, my back out one, taking over my screen. Okay, there, I think I got it all on there. Okay, so just to explain the sheet that you see in front of you, you show, see the projects, what type they are. The 21 and 22 years are in the current tip. And although some of the dollar figures are a little bit different than they're in the current approved tip, the unknown out years in the, in the current tip, we have the four program years and then we say estimated funding needs after 2022, which is the lifetime of the tip. So that 35, 735 down there at the bottom is what is estimated needed after the current tip. And then the folks at DOT, this is James Starzak helped with this, he created these numbers here. These are what we had, or we're guessing or possible dollar figures out here and when they might be programmed for the later phases of these projects. So in the case of the Fireweed Lane rehab, the, we currently show money here in 2021 and that is a right away hit. Actually, it shows here in 2022, sorry. That shows a right away hit. So the construction and the utilities are in the outer years. And so you'll see in 23, some funding there for the utilities and out in 26, this construction cost. Now, this is one of those projects that in the current tip, it shows in the outer years, the construction to be around $6 million. So that $44 million, that is a much larger number, to put it mildly. I don't know the math on that, what percentage that tripled, quadrupled, quintupled, et cetera, but that's larger. So that's kind of helping understand what the table that we have is here. Those outer years are guestimates on cost and when they might, those additional costs might be showing up. So I don't know exactly how folks want to go through this, but I do know that the Fireweed Lane project in particular is one that when it got through, it's, yeah, I'm not a NEPA expert, but let's say it's initial scoping or it's early preliminary engineering. There was a discussion between the MOA and the DOT on what things needed to be done for Fireweed Lane. And there's some differences of opinion or discrepancies or whatever you want to call it between the two, the two entities. So I'm going to ask Jim if he wants to talk about that. I think you, Mr. Amundson, you probably know more about that over DOT than certainly than I do, but the differences in the dollar figure from the six to 44 million?
Yes, the discussion centered on whether or not it was simply going to be a very rudimentary four lane to three lane project, or what it's currently looking at now is at the end of the project, the city of Anchorage will take over ownership of all of Fireweed Lane. And one of the asks from the city of Anchorage before they would accept that as turnover at the end of it was a requirement to go through and replace all of the storm drain systems that are also underneath it and underground the utilities along it. That's why it went from six to nine million to the 44 million that you're seeing now.
So I guess the question would be, and just to clarify that, the, at the request or the request of the Muni to say, hey, we would, maybe we could underground these, do all those sorts of things, that's the response of, well, if you want to do that, this is what it would cost?
Yes.
Okay, so that's kind of a, if you want this version of it, this is what it would cost, but maybe if they don't want that version, it could be done for less.
Yeah, but again, that was the, the response coming back from the city maintenance folks and street maintenance was pretty specific of they would not be willing to take over final ownership, which is another piece of this particular puzzle. Before this could advance as a project was a requirement for commitment to have the city take it over when it was done.
Okay.
So it's a little more complex than just the city wants it. It's for the project to keep moving, we have to satisfy the city's concerns and considerations so that they'll own it at the end of it. Otherwise, we aren't able to advance the project at all.
Okay.
Due to some policies that are in place as we speak.
Okay, before I get off, I just, I do have a question from Ms. Alatell. And I think James Starzak, if you're on and you can comment, the question was, what do the yellow and the red signify in, in the sheet here?
Yeah, certainly. The, the projects that are highlighted in yellow are ones that have funding estimates and out years, but it's not, the projects haven't been advanced so that there's an actual schedule. Like Rabbit Creek Road Construction hasn't even begun yet. That one goes into design in 2022, but the tip shows it's got a $10 million estimated funds needed in an unknown year. And those are what make up the candy stripe, the red and white stripe bar there on the, on the chart of unknown out year. And then the downtown trail connection, Fish Creek Trail Connection, those are highlighted because there is some question as to what those, what those totals might be if we go with a reduced scope. And then the red one for Seward Highway, that's got a million dollars in an out, estimated in an unknown out year. I've got that highlighted because I just can't, I can't really see where we are going to start design next year for any projects related to that Seward Highway to Glen Highway P E L because it hasn't really been started yet. I also, I also want to just let you guys know, the spreadsheet that Craig has sharing, is sharing with us there is a little outdated and I've added the most current iteration to the chat section for this, for this work session. So you all have that available in the files. If you wanted to take a look at something with a few, with a little bit updated numbers.
See if I can open it. That didn't work.
And I emailed it directly to you as well, Craig. So if that doesn't work.
As well.
And the big difference being there was a $2 million more requested for O'Malley Construction.
No.
Academy Vanguard was added. Well, no, that's, that's here, that's in here as well. Pathway and Trails, $2 million moved from 22 to 21 based on some, on a PM's schedule of his project. And I think that's really the biggest couple changes there.
Okay, well, just for, again, this is a work session. This is not, this is not, we can't vote on anything today, but so this kind of the purpose of discussion here, we have, I know we have a discrepancy here in the O'Malley Road. In the spreadsheet here, it said 9404 and the figure in the current tip is 12906. So a little bit different there, but not horrendously off for just the purpose of the discussion today. Let's see what else to go down the list here. So, so I don't know, Kent, I think I saw that you were on the discussion on Fireweed Lane. You know, it may be a separate on offline conversation between the Muni and the state on what's going to happen with Fireweed Lane and to get that big, you know, the bottom line is 50 million in Spinard, 40 some odd million in Fireweed Lane and whatever Academy Vanguard's going to cost and Mountain Air and all that sort of stuff. That's going to be challenging, I think, to fit them all in. So I don't know, Kent, if you had any insight on Fireweed Lane? Discussions there? If you're talking, you're on mute, we cannot hear you, but make sure you don't want to join in.
What about Fireweed?
I was just, I was just wondering if Kent had any comment on it coming from the municipal side of what we're, what we're kind of trying to do there.
Yeah, Chris Schutie's got his hand up. I'm not sure what he wants to say.
I have to go to Chris to see, I see Ms. Alatell. We'll go to you after Chris.
Thank you. And thanks, Jim. My question is related to the Fireweed Lane line, if that's okay. So I know Kent's not on the phone and I was hoping to ask essentially the question that you did, Craig, of what PMNE's thoughts are about this. But I guess I'll, since he's not here, I'll turn to Jim. And these are going to be some ignorant questions. I apologize in advance. Why is the 44 hitting in 2026? I seem to recall the timeline being shorter in something else that I've seen recently.
I think the project can probably be delivered sooner than that, potentially by as much as maybe one year. But the other challenge is, and it's part of the discussion that had Craig and James Nancy, is at $44 million, we're also looking at a $50 million price tag on Spinard Road and a couple of other fairly expensive Academy Vanguard not even being shown yet. Fitting all of these into 25, 26, and 27, since each year you're getting less than $30 million total is going to be a particular challenge. So I think the bigger challenge on when we deliver these is deciding what's the priority of which ones needed first, whether it's Academy Vanguard, Martin Luther King Extension, Fireweed Lane, or Spinard Road. And that's probably going to have more to do which one goes in which year than anything else.
Gotcha. Thank you. And then the follow-up question is, is, maybe it's not related to this Spinard Road line, but the, I have a question about the column that says unknown out year. I'm not sure what that number represents. So I was wondering if that's like what we need to fund for everything that comes after 2023 or what's the math on that line? It doesn't add up in my head.
Yeah, so generally, we have a column in our tip, well, we have the 19, 20, 21, and 22 years in our tip. And then we have a column that says estimated funding needs after 2022. So after the life of the tip, we'll say, according to the current tip, it says we need a $6 million in Fireweed. The C Street project is another $6 million, 40 million in Spinard Road, et cetera. So it's those columns added up, although that particular number isn't quite what I show in this one, but maybe I didn't add it all up. But anyway, that's what it's supposed to show. The numbers that are needed for those projects to be completed after the life of the current tip.
Okay, and that, so it is related to the Fireweed line then. How, how is that 35.7 if in 2026 we have to spend 44 and in 2023 you have to spend three just on Fireweed?
Yeah, so the Fireweed numbers are numbers that we have gotten from the exercise that Jim and his folks have done to work with the MOA on what that project actually costs. The unknown out years, I believe, is the cost that's coming out of the current tip. So the 44 million is not anywhere.
Gotcha. Gotcha. So, so in the current tip, yeah, the unfunded needs in the current tip would add up to 35.7, but now we're saying that outside of the tip, we're estimating it needs to go up even more. Do you know what the sum total, I guess this is for James, do you know what the sum total of needs and all those out years is right now? In this, in this spreadsheet? I can't do the math that quickly. It's like 180 million? No, that's not right.
You're asking what's, what's the total of the 23 through 28 columns here?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, it's just under 190. It's 189.
All right. Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Yeah. Okay, back to, I believe Ms. Alatell had her hand up.
Thank you. Before we leave Fireweed Lane, I have a question on one on Spinard Road. On Fireweed Lane, I don't know if it's been part of the conversation. I would like to toss it out there that it be part of the conversation. If the creation of a stormwater utility would change the ultimate cost on, and requirements for the municipality on Fireweed Lane. If you have anything you could share about that, that would be great. But if not, I hope that either Mr. Schutie or the state can raise that question when it talks to PMNE next. And then the question on Fireweed Lane, I'll just keep going. Sorry, the question on Spinard Road. What's the 2.5 in yellow? What's going on there exactly? And the reason I ask, I apologize, is the open house on that project was just announced. I was at North Star Community Council last night. They're super excited. So if there's any potential big changes coming up, I want to make sure to be aware of them or if they're in the mix because they're heavily invested in that particular project. Thanks.
Let's see, Kent is, Kent has his hand up now. I thought he was here. So now he has his hand up. Want to share some insight?
I am here. Thank you, Craig. I just wanted to try to respond at least in part to Meg's question. I am not fully conversant on the stormwater utility. That's being led by, primarily by folks from AWU right now because they have the experience in utilities. But I suspect, and others can jump in if they think I have a wrong, I don't think that, even if we got a stormwater utility online in the next couple of years, I don't think it would make a significant difference in the construction cost for Fireweed and where those funds come from, unless there was some bonding capacity that came along with it. Absent that, I think we're looking, you're looking at a number of years before collections under a stormwater utility model would build up a sufficient bankroll to start funding capital projects like this. So I, I don't think that in the next few years that it would, it would impact the AMAT's contribution to the Fireweed project make.
Thank you.
So I, since I now see Mr. Kraps is here and Kent, you're online here. I'm curious if you folks, either one of you have any insight into Fireweed and the utilities and the signals and all that sort of stuff, the difference in the dollar figure between what was originally put in there and what Jim was talking about recently? Any thoughts on that?
I do not. I'm frankly unaware of the, the change from six to 44. I do know that Paul and Lymanham and Street Maintenance had expressed concerns about accepting ownership and maintenance responsibilities for a road that might have substandard storm drains. So I support Paul's position on that, but I don't know where the cost came from. And I'm not, haven't been involved in all in discussions about signals or lighting on the project. I would just, that's about the extent of my knowledge right now, Craig. Okay?
Yeah, Craig, this is John. I don't have anything else either. I haven't looked at the project lately. So I'm not really sure that I have any comments on the, the signal and the lighting part of it.
Okay. I guess it's something that we need to get together with here in the, in the short, near, near term so that we can figure out how to move forward with it. I, it's just a large, a much larger number than was previously and worried about making sure we can deliver projects. We don't want to get into a time trap situation. So, moving down the list, the next one I really, I kind of really wanted to talk about was actually down to the couple of trail projects there that are in yellow, the Downtown Trail and the Fish Creek Trail. I think there is some good news on one of those. And then the other one, we just need to get a little closer to the, what we want to figure out on that. So let me, let me get the right, that's the, there's the picture that Mr. Jackson sent to me. So this is the Fish Creek Trail Connection. This is the one that goes, will leave from Northern Lights through the Fish Creek Estuary connects to the Coastal Trail. It's a project that is in the current tip. And we find it here. It's had 500,000 in 2024 design and 22 has some right of way with about a, it looks like around a $4 million cost after that. And as you can see from the, it has a potential cost now of about 8.7. So Kevin, do you want to talk about that? Or do you, I know Josh Duran with Parks is on here. We can do that too, however you, someone has a choice to go first?
I don't mind going first if that's okay with Josh. We've put together some planning estimates for it and they are just that, obviously. And they're on there. If you scroll down to the next page of this document here.
Are they here?
There's, yeah, keep going. Yeah, so keep going a little bit more just so we can see the two. Yeah, there you go. So the top one is, is a hard surface trail estimate. And Parks was thinking, maybe we could look at, you know, a soft surface option. And, and so that's really those, those are the two estimates that we've put together based on historic information, our best abilities. And so you can see that one of the problems here is between the two trail projects, you know, there's a lot of funding in trails. And so I think one of the questions is, do we want to move forward with this particular project? But I defer to Josh in Parks on that.
Yeah, thanks, Kevin. Yeah, I don't have any critique of the great work that Kevin and Noah did putting together this cost estimate. I do think it's worth noting that, well, one, we're Parks and Recreation, we manage a lot of trails. We think trails are great. We think it's a great project. We think it's going to be a huge improvement for the community and we're excited to hopefully be able to realize this. Other things I think that are worth noting, if you, if you look at the active project, soft surface trail project and boardwalk project that we have in Northeast Anchorage, the Northeast Connector Trail, when we first started with that project through the DSR that was created by UAA, initial cost estimates were very low and I think questioned by many. They were coming in at $560,000. When we actually got consultants on board and started looking at the project, the first cost estimate with lots of boardwalk was coming in at 8 million. Having, working with the design team, we have made a lot of changes to the design, the alignment, and got it down to 3 million. And the reason I bring that up is if you compare that to this project, I do think that, at least Kevin identified at one point, that the numbers are pretty conservative. But when we do essentially get into the weeds on the project with our consultants, they are trail projects. There's typically a lot of opportunities for change, different approaches, things of that nature. And if this did get turned on and we did start working with consultants, we might find similar opportunities. And I, the only one that I can address right now is the southern aspect of the boardwalk. I think we could probably lose about a third of it and have that be filled wetland with a continuation of the soft surface trail. And then as we get closer to the Fish Creek Bridge, I think we absolutely do need to transition into a boardwalk because of site conditions. And that's really all the value I can add on that stuff.
Okay, so, so that's, that's the Fish Creek, Fish Creek Trail Connection. There may be a possibility of that coming down, but you know, it's something that we have to look at it and see. We usually say about two and a half to three million in non-motorized projects a year. So certainly a 9 million or 8 million or a $6 million project, you're going to have to bundle a couple of years together. So now the other one, the Downtown Trail Connection, Josh, that one is started, has it not? Have we assigned or you got a consultant on board for that one?
Yeah, and I'll start and Kevin might have some additional comments, but the, we did find some good news as soon as we did get the consultants on board. What we believe was a typo in the provided DSR, if you look at all the different routes that were proposed for the Downtown Connection, they all had a $500,000 line item for traffic control associated with the railroad. This particular one, it showed that as 5 million. So if you take that away and turn it into 500,000, which the consultants also identified was very conservative, they thought it would be more like around 150 or so. And if you take that away, that turns it into just a 4 to 5 million project. So that was a find that is unfortunate, had to be realized by consultants, but a find nonetheless.
Yeah, and, and the reason for that traffic control is basically when you're working with a, I'm just using the Fish Creek Trail one, but when you're working with something that is in proximity to the railroad, you have to make sure that, you know, safety first, all that sort of stuff. And so there's going to be some there. It just maybe not $5 million to do it. So that, I don't know what that tells us in terms of the actual dollar figure of that project. Josh, do you know what that, what those preliminary numbers were? I mean, we had it in the tip as, let me find that again. Downtown Trail Connection was a construction cost of around 4 million and 1 million for right of way. So I don't know what that was coming up with lately.
That seems to be where it's at unless you That seems to be where it's at unless you have a correction to that, Kevin.
Um, well, my numbers are a little dated for, um, I'm showing based on our, uh, before we got the consultant's information, uh, we were estimating almost twelve million for phase four for the downtown trail connection. But, you know, I, I think that can come down. We do have Kenny Engineering under contract now. Well, they're not, the contract hasn't been executed. They were selected and we're just starting negotiations with them. But the idea is to have them take a look right off the bat and try to ground truth some of these costs. We only have, I think, three hundred thousand dollars currently programmed for this project, which is certainly not enough for the design phase. But I think there is some cost savings that is for construction that we're going to see. But it's really early for, it's hard for us to say at this point.
Craig?
Yes, sir.
Meg's been waiting patiently with her hand up. You might let her ask the question.
We will go back to her now that we've introduced those two things. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Um, so on the Fish Creek Trail Connection, the hard surface versus the soft surface, um, it'd be really helpful to, you know, um, general lifespan of soft surface versus hard surface and what's the maintenance and operation, um, cost of those. Um, and then at what point would we be, you know, how far out looking at replacement? Because while I appreciate there's a considerable difference here between the cost of construction, I guess I'd like to know kind of what, what, once they're constructed, what's our ongoing obligation? Thanks.
And this is Josh again. Um, big differences are is the, the soft surface trail. Trails do require more annual maintenance, but they do have a much longer lifespan than a paved trail and don't require, say in thirty years, us to come in, do additional subgrade improvements, remove offending vegetation such as cottonwoods because of the impact that they have on the subgrade and the, the paved asphalt. So it is something that is in our wheelhouse for the management of soft surface trails. And one of the reasons that we did feel comfortable considering that is when Parks and Recreation was working with the Turnagain Community, they identified that they actually preferred it to be a soft surface trail. Um, in that moment, we thought that this AMAT's funding would only accommodate a paved trail. So we were still going down that route because of the idea of nine percent local match realizing the entire trail. Um, so we are flexible as it relates to the actual outcome of it. But of course, funding is in play and will, um, drive decisions made as it relates to the final product as, as well as the public process.
Great. Thank you. Thanks for the clarification.
Uh, let's see, let's go back to this. So then the other thing, only other thing I guess we should talk about as it relates to these things, unless someone has a question, is we are in the middle of doing the amendment to add the Academy Vanguard project in here. And that, according to the amendment, is about an eighteen, a little over eighteen million dollars is what it shows for the construction phase. Which is not, that's not reflected in the tip here. Or in the spreadsheet here, what we have before you. So that is something that would be in addition to the forty some odd for fireweed and the fifty for Spinnard Road. It's an eighteen million dollar addition as well. So, um, that's a lot of requests for the same pot of money. I just want folks to be aware of all of those things also.
Craig, I would point out that one of your biggest challenges is you currently are showing Martin Luther King Avenue being ready for construction by twenty twenty-four. I think that's an optimistic timeline for delivering that size and complexity of a project. On the other hand, Academy Vanguard, courtesy of all of the advanced work that the city has done, in all likelihood, might well be ready by twenty twenty-four if we can get the check cut so we can start the effort.
That's a very valid point. Yeah, I don't, um, I don't.
The sooner we quit talking about it and start spending it, I think the better it will be for everybody.
Yeah. So can you refresh my memory on where the MLK project is? I know that there was a, a design hit in nineteen, but I don't know, did that ever get, did we ever do that?
Kevin, have you started negotiations yet?
Uh, yes, we have. Um, R and M was selected and I just gave them an NTP last Monday. Uh, we had a kickoff meeting, I think it was Friday, and they're just getting going. Uh, but you know, our current scope is just to get through the environmental document, which is a CE, I mean, not a CE, it's an EA, uh, which, you know, we're not sure how long that's going to take. It might take two years to get through that, but we haven't negotiated anything further than that.
And the challenge on how long it will take is really going to depend on which preferred alternative they end up coming up with. So if they pick the right preferred alternative, it might well make it in twenty twenty-four. But that's a, a bet that smart money isn't going to take.
Well, uh, I guess that is what I wanted to share with folks today to make sure we're, we have information. Again, not a decision point because this is just a work session. I just want the people to be aware of these challenges. And know that we're looking to how we can deliver all these projects. And if we can't, if we have to, um, not move forward with some and take them out of the tip, et cetera. So, uh, does anyone have any other questions regarding what we went through or anything else to share?
Think you have hands raised.
I do now see hands raised. Let's see who's up first. Aaron.
Uh, I think Weddleton was first. Let him, let it, go ahead and go.
Okay, just now on the, the MLK extension, is that, that project primarily to support the Tudor Elmore project? With the DHHS building and so on?
I, I would say yes. This is Kevin. Um, yeah, the purpose of that project is to provide connections, uh, to the existing signals that at Piper and Tudor and then MLK and Elmore.
Well, that project is parked now and we actually have on our agenda for this evening, I guess, introduced actually, uh, an item for a settlement for shutting that down. So the urgency on that project has changed dramatically.
And this is Chris. Shooty, I'll chime in. Um, that's not a hundred percent accurate, Mr. Weddleton. The specific developer and development project is the matter in front of the assembly now. The work that the municipality started to, um, make the site, prep the site, make it ready for future development remains, including some of the internal non-AMAT-funded roadwork. So I would argue that while the development project articulated in the development agreement that ultimately, uh, imploded, um, uh, is no longer on the table, the development goals of the area and the work that we're continuing to do is still there. So I would, I would say that it's still, uh, it's still a need, maybe not a pressing priority, but still a need, um, for, for any sort of development in that area. And perhaps most importantly, to help alleviate some of the concerns that DOT has raised in the past about the access to and from Tudor, um, at that particular corner. So, uh, we think it's an important project still. It provides a much needed connection to signalize intersection, um, and will be beneficial for the area in the long run.
Everyone do what Chris says.
Adjourned.
Or follow his, follow his information, not mine. Thanks. Thanks, Chris.
Uh, okay. Uh, I guess we are now to Aaron.
Um, okay. So I just want to make sure everyone's kind of aware of, uh, funding in the tip and how it kind of works because this is pretty significant what we're talking about here and it's going to be asking for some, uh, decisions at some point soon. So right now we get about thirty million total for the tip funding. But we have certain things we have to take off the top of that because they're required funding or funding we give to, say, transit. So the required funding and the funding we give to transit is about three million dollars. I'm assuming we're not going to be cutting down on transit fund, you know, the stuff we give to transit and we can't cut off the required funding. So we're now down to about twenty-seven million a year. Uh, we also have plans and studies we do. Uh, some of them are required like the MTP. So that's another small hit we need to deal with. Um, so we're probably looking about twenty-six million per year that we split between roadway, pavement replacement and non-motorized improvements. So when you're looking at these projects that are forty million or forty-four million dollars, fifty million, those projects are going to be, have, have to be split into two chunks of funding, two years. So fireweed is going to have to be, for example, in what we see in front of us, twenty-five to twenty-six. So there'll be like a twenty-two million hit each year. Um, and so that takes out twenty-five, uh, twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. There's really no other funding that can go forward in those years. Small little things here or there. Uh, you're definitely not going to get a potter drive rehabilitation on top of the fireweed, on top of Spinnard, on top of everything else, um, that we have to do. Yes, it'd be nice if we could, Mr. Shooty. Um, but we're actually potentially receiving a reduction in the future. So we got to be careful of that. Um, so then we move to Spinnard with fifty million dollars. That's going to be two hits in twenty-seven, twenty-eight. So you have twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-eight completely allocated to two projects. And then you have another thirty-five million that we have to deal with, with C Street, Ocean Dock Road. There's a six million or more dollar hit in the outer years that we haven't shown here. There's the Rabbit Creek Road reconstruction, which I believe is ten million dollar hit. And then there's the Academy Vanguard Drive. So, you know, we only have in the next, you know, from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-eight, we have a small amount of money in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four to work with. That's not enough to cover everything. Now, if we extend MLK out to not be on twenty twenty-four, that'll free up some money for Academy Vanguard. Cool. If we can make it, that's good. But what about Rabbit Creek? What about C Street, Ocean Dock? And I, I don't really see anything with the Seward Highway PTL design happening. So we'll have to talk about that. Uh, but it's just something to kind of think about of how we want to split out this funding because it's going to leave us with, there's a couple of projects we're probably not going to be able to fund in the next eight years. And before we get too far into them, we probably need to decide which ones we want to move forward with.
And my point back to Aaron's argument, and I've shared this with Craig and James already, is the fact that, uh, Spinnard Road, the last piece, last project of that that we advanced, from the time we started it until the time we delivered it was nine years. Martin Luther King Drive is going to be similarly complex and it's probably going to be six to eight years before we're going to be able to deliver that, given the likelihood of running into conflicts and pushbacks from adjacent property owners and otherwise. And Fireweed Road, uh, this is our third attempt at trying to do a major change to Fireweed Road and both of those ended up dying halfway along the way. So if we, if we start delaying the start of some of these projects and then all of the sudden that project ends up not making it to delivery or gets delayed by three or four years because of a conflict with a critical piece of right of way or an environmental challenge, we'll suddenly have a two or three year hole in our delivery program. It's better to overprogram it now and have the problem of sliding one or two of them slightly farther back once it's most of the way to being delivered than not starting enough projects to keep everything fed so that we are fully expending our money on an annual basis. I understand Aaron's point, but the risk is suddenly having a year that we're not spending the ten or fifteen million dollars that we were expecting.
The biggest counter I would say to that is that works really well in the STIP because you have a faster process on being able to move things around. But the AMAT's process right now is six months or more for a, a major amendment. And that is very impactful to projects. And, uh, if that changes in the future and is not six months or more, cool. But right now it is something we have to account for. So I know last minute changes are fine and dandy, but when they're last minute and it takes six months to do and then we have missed the federal fiscal year, you know, it is something to consider when we're talking about programming these projects and being aware of it is all I'm saying.
Okay. Before we get too far on that, I will just mention one thing. We have three hands up, but I will mention that, um, O'Malley Road was in the program when I started seventeen years ago. So some projects take a little longer than nine years. Ms. Zalatell, uh, we'll go to you first and then Mr. Starzak and then Mr. Weddleton.
Thanks. I have, uh, two different questions. Um, the first is, excuse me, for Mr. Amundsen. Um, when he says, you know, deliver the project, I guess I need a little clarification. From what phase? Um, so at what point, you know, then are you estimating your time to deliver the project? Is that like final design or, or, or sorry, is that at a, a particular design phase? Like once we're through design and then you're talking timeline?
From the time we started the, from the time we start the project with me, which means we get the funding to go hire consultant and start the environmental document until we actually deliver it to construction, can range anywhere from as soon as four years where we don't have any complex right of way or objections on environmental basis. But that same project could take eight or nine years or as Craig correctly pointed out, maybe fifteen years if it runs into particular issues that end up leading to a lot of political consternation or other issues environmentally. For example, there's some of those that can carry, where you end up with a Land Water Conservation Fund six F effect that might take four years all by itself to get it worked out and resolved. So.
Got it.
Many of these projects, it's your best guess going in because you don't know till you're through the environmental document, which of those are going to jump up and bite you in the ankle.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, and then on the tip amendment, um, I heard Aaron say as six months or more, um, what's, what kind of timeline are we in? Are we thinking about right now as we try to resolve this issue? And the reason I ask is I'm trying to, um, get my community councils more involved, whether you love it or not, um, early on. So, because a lot of them have major road concerns. And so I'm trying to, as I continue to educate myself, bring them along with me. And so I just would like to, um, make them aware of this and kind of give them what the timeline will look like. Um, and then the final thing is a request and Aaron, I can make it more offline, but that tip funding breakdown you just did, that would be great to have in a one sheet, um, or something I could have to reference with, um, the public and, um, and community councils in particular. Thank you.
Um, Craig, I guess, do you want to talk about the timeline for the amendment stuff?
Uh, so the ti, just the timeline for the amendment is basically, um, you know, we have a one month public review that we do, but then we have to take all of our amendments through, uh, the assembly. And the, the time crunch is just how long it takes to get the document into, what is it called? Onboard now. It used to be Pace, so they'll use Pace. So we have to get the documents in the system, get the, uh, the hearing scheduled, all that sort of stuff. Um, right now, because the Academy Vanguard is a project that requires the air quality conformity analysis, we, we're waiting to get that, uh, analysis done and, and release that analysis at the same time as the public review. Um, so we're just in the process of getting that, uh, interagency consultation team scheduled so that we can, um, uh, do the public review on it and then get it to the assembly. We can, we can start the process of getting it to the assembly at the same time as the public review. Uh, but we're, that's what we're waiting on right now. So we're just, you know, we're, we're maybe a third of the way through this timeframe for this particular one.
Okay, great. Thanks. Yeah. And doing that, getting it, um, to the assembly at about the time of the public review, um, will help us facilitate any questions from the public as those come through during that review period. Thank you.
Uh, James, you had your hand up next. Mr. Starzak.
Uh, thanks, Craig. Um, yeah.
Uh, thanks, Greg. Um, yeah, I just kind of um, you know, there, there, when I'm looking at this spreadsheet, I three, I see three separate issues that I think are uh, are, 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 are things that the uh committees need to be focused on here. Uh, and it's kind of a short, medium, long-term situation. Uh, in the short term, um resolving the uh, scope and timing of the downtown trail connection and the Fish Creek Trail connection, I think is probably the most germane and uh, and, and time sensitive issue. Uh, because once we figure out exactly what our direction is on that, it makes the, it, it gives us better numbers and better schedule for the rest of this. And so when we start to manipulate schedules, we have a better understanding at least of what these two are because the difference between the twelve million dollars for the downtown trail connection uh for construction or the seven million dollars for a reduced scope um is, is pretty significant. Um, secondly, you know, the timing and uh phasing um or however we figure out how to work out the funding for fireweed and Spinnard. Um, you know, that's, that, that's something that is a long-term issue, but um, the sooner you get some direction from that and, and a, and a path forward from that, the better off you are. Uh, but in the midterm, looking at like the twenty three to twenty six tip, um, you know, there seems to be some space in, say, twenty four, twenty five, where we don't particularly have any projects going to construction during those times. And we don't particularly have anything in design that's going to result in construction. And so, you know, what I'm looking at is looking at, say, twenty five, uh, where on your sheet you've got about eight million dollars. Uh, but in the information that I'm, I'm carrying right now, it's actually about three six because that potter drive uh is probably, is, is scheduled as it stands to be in twenty four. Um, so, so now in twenty five, we're looking at three eight point six million dollars, which is only a tenth of the annual AMAS allocation. Um, so there's, my third concern is that we have this gap in between what AMAS will be allocated and what we are planning on spending. Um, that needs to be addressed as well. Uh, but to back to my original point, yeah, figuring out what's going on with the downtown trail and Fish Creek Trail, I think should be a number one priority and um, any any way we can get that resolved sooner rather than later, I think will help everybody immensely.
All right. I agree that getting uh downtown and Fish Creek figured out and fireweed, those are the priorities because those will really uh help us figure out how to go forward in the near term. Uh, Mr. Weddleton.
All right, thanks. So getting back to Aaron's comment on the time it takes to get a major tip amendment through at six months. And I, so who defines what is a major tip amendment? If we're just juggling things to make the dollars line up, like things that James said to make that, makes, you know, tighten it up. Is that a major amendment?
So, so yeah, we currently have in our operating, there, there are a couple of things that rule that. Uh, there's language in the Code of Federal Regulations that uh, uh, you know, that uh FHWA has passed, which includes, among other things, if you add a, add a project, if you delete a project, if you change the parameters, you know, whether it's going from a, a fireweed from Arctic to Seward Highway or whether it's going from Spinnard to Seward Highway, if you change those end parts, that is considered a major amendment and that's in the Code of Federal Regulations. And then we have set some things in our operating agreement that talks about the dollar figures. Uh, the feds uh will give you some leeway on, you know, if you're increasing the cost of a project by a certain amount, there's some leeway, but uh, you know, you can't triple the cost of a project and have it be uh just an admin mod. Uh, they don't require some of those additions to be major amendments, but some of the stuff they expect it to be. So there are a couple of different uh, couple of different things that we have to look at to determine whether things are a major amendment. We also have in our operating agreement right now, the language that talks about, and I believe it's in the municipal code as well, where it talks about amendments to the tip have to go through uh the assembly. Uh, as you're probably aware, we are one of very few uh MPOs around the country that have only one local governing body. You know, Chicago doesn't require that their tip amendments go through all of their twenty eight or however many little towns and uh local government entities, but we have that because we only have one. So it doesn't, it's not required that we go there to the local, to our local assembly, required by federal law, but we have it in our operating agreement. Uh, to answer that question for you?
Well, sort of. I, I, well, I guess, yes, thanks. Um, now, is it something that the assembly could change that code and define um? You, you know, I mean, I don't know what it would be, but you know, if within an eight-year period, it's simply moving dollars around to different years, then it doesn't have to come to us or something like that, you know, because um, you know, it's a hassle for you and it's not, I don't think amongst assembly members, so critical.
Yeah. So, so right now, i- it's in those two places. The, the language about tip amendments going through the assembly is in our operating agreement, but it's also a municipal code. So um, the assembly can't change the operating agreement by itself and the AMAS cannot change municipal code. So you folks can change your municipal code and the AMAS uh entities can change their operating agreement. Those two things can happen and uh, we would not, if we decided, uh, if both groups decided, we would not have to take amendments through the assembly. You, you could decide if you wanted a certain dollar figure to have to go through or new projects or whatever, but you, you could just decide not to have any amendments go through there and just the full, every four years doing one. So that's up to you folks.
Okay, I think we can take a look at that. I appreciate that.
Uh, okay. Uh, Mr. Amundson had his hand up.
Uh, part of the reason that our AMAS rules allow an overprogramming from about twenty to twenty five percent at this point in the proceedings is so that we can make sure that we do expend all of the funding that we're supposed to do. So I, I guess that's one of the things I just think we need to keep in mind is, is at this point in the proceedings, we're better off to be overprogrammed by twenty or twenty five percent or whatever the limit currently is in our uh approved process. And not to be sitting here worrying about the last nickel because sure as heck uh bid openings for O'Malley will be up or down and cause the number to change as well as some of these other numbers are going to fluctuate as well. They always do. So uh, I think being too cautious at this point can cost us more than be over, being overly optimistic. Just something to keep in mind.
Valid point. Words of wisdom from someone who's been there. All right. I don't see any other hands up right now. Um, so I guess uh, unless folks have anything else, we can be done. Um, I will, we'll get this posted. Christine will get it posted here uh fairly soon and um we will uh go from there. Thanks, everybody, for joining us. Oh, I have, Mr. James has his hand up again.
Uh, yeah, so just uh going back, uh, what do you see is our next step with the downtown trail and the Fish Creek Trail issue?
Uh, well, I guess uh the, the folks at Parks and the, working with Kevin, uh, we have to try and uh get a better number on those things. Um, this is not an area that I have any expertise in, but um uh, uh, other than that, I, yeah, that's what we need to do. We need to come up with better numbers there. So uh, I, it's up to Kevin or Josh to uh let me know what agreement they've come to on that. So I don't know if Kevin or Josh want to give, is there a timeframe on what, what you're doing to come to agreement on that?
I think that the, the downtown one is a little bit simpler than the Fish Creek one. Uh, Kevin, we can have an offline discussion and come up with a strategy to see um what we can make as a recommendation that feels much more realistic and uh attainable.
Yeah, and um I'd just like to point out that although we have program, uh, funding programmed for the Fish Creek Trail, we haven't put out a request for proposals yet. And so I'm kind of holding off on that to, to uh, waiting for a decision to be made too. Um, so we're not going to have a consultant that can give us a, a, a better number than a planning level thing, but we'll, we'll look at um that, I think, uh, do our best to come up with some revised numbers.
Okay, so the sooner you can get me a revised number on that, I can look at this and see maybe if we have the ability to uh, you know, move forward both of them still. So sooner we uh get moving on that, the better.
Okay.
Would it be feasible to have some sort of uh information item or project discussion for the February meetings? Ready? Uh, Kevin?
That's like almost a month away or is it not too far, huh?
It's a month, yeah.
Um, we can try. I don't think our consultant will have, it's probably going to take us um, you know, I would suspect uh at least two weeks um to complete negotiations on the downtown trail. So to come up with numbers that soon, that's going to be uh, you know, us in-house, uh, DOT, working with Parks to, to come up with our best uh planning level numbers. So we could do that.
Okay. All right. I guess uh that is it for today unless anyone has anything else. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you. That's all.